Okay, we are called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 5th, 2022. I would ask that you please rise for a beef invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is Batavia and the rest of the world enters into our holiday celebration season. We are many, many, many thanks for all the nice gifts and unique opportunities that have befallen Batavia in the last year. We've had a lot of new improvements. We've had a lot of new businesses move into the community. And most importantly, we've had some very nice new residents move into the community who are already trying to step forward and help with anything that they can do to make Batavia a better place. We are mindful that this coming weekend is going to be the beginning of the Batavia Christmas Toy Distribution. And to illustrate how fortunate Batavia is in having people who care, we can proudly stand here today and say that we have done this toy distribution every Christmas since 1950. So this will be its 72nd year that we have done this where a list of children are known to potentially be in need at Christmas are put together by the Ministry Association, the school district, the police, and the fire departments. And then in the coming days, the weekend, their parents are invited to come and make some selections of toys for their children at no charge. And this has been a tradition that started, as they say, in 1950, and I think speaks wonders about the heart and the mind and the soul and the giving of Batavia. So we are ever appreciative of the good things that happen in our community and just want to specifically acknowledge them in our invocation. Tonight, we ask for direction and guidance and vision as the city council acts on the items of business before them. And we also want to remember those from our community and from throughout our country who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America in this most troubling time of our world. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Solfi, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller. Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Connolly.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vocal singer. Thirteen of fourteen present, Your Honor.
Thank you. So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is the reminder from the chair that if you're going to speak tonight at the meeting, to please come forward and use the podium and be prepared to adjust it if necessary because it's what is now also being recorded on BATV, and so you have to have that microphone going to be heard. Moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have anything this evening as governmental services chairman?
Your Honor, we're done.
Anybody on the council? The only thing I would like to say is I don't know if they're coming, but I had invited the Bailey family to come down and tell us about the Christmas toy distribution. They're going to be doing it, I believe, the next two weekends out at the Sam's Club building. And they've got, they seem to think they have maybe a record number of people, but they've had some pretty healthy donations by several businesses and individuals in town. And so I think things are looking very good there, but they were going to come down and tell us about it. I guess if we don't get them here tonight, maybe we'll get them at the next meeting.
Actually, Bailey, I'm sorry, Brittany Bailey Cole is on the line, and Brittany is going to give a presentation tonight under Matters from the Public.
All right, very good. Then I guess we have nothing further on items to be removed, added, or changed. Nobody on the council, I think, further? Okay, moving then to the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, would you present this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals: The November 25th, 2022 payroll on the amount of $950,063.68. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,015,627.05. Ordinance 22-48, amending municipal code relating to water usage rates and service charges. Ordinance 22-49, amending the municipal code relating to sanitary sewer usage rates. Ordinance 22-50, amending Title VIII, Chapter 1, Article A of Municipal Code related to electric regulations and rates. Resolution 22-116-R, authorizing change order number nine with Williams Brothers Construction, Inc., for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment rehabilitation project. Resolution 22-113-R, exercising home rule authority to expand the authority of the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to extend the current firefighter eligibility list. Resolution 22-115-R, authorizing approval of contract with Polco National Research Center to administer an employee survey. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Move by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any comments from the city council? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. All right, moving to item seven, which is Matters from the Public, and I'm told that we have Brittany Bailey online. She's going to go and give us a report on the toy drive. Brittany, are you with us?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Give us your report, please.
Okay, so we are going to be distributing down here from the old Sam's Club on Sunday, and then we'll do it again during the week. And we have over 120 families that we're helping this year. We've got a lot of teens, as usual. We have over 115 teens that we're going to be helping this year. So teens are always our biggest group that we need the most help with. Most people, when they think of a toy drive, they think of the infants, they think of the three-year-olds, they think of the 10-year-olds, and most people don't think of the teens. But the cool thing about the toy drive here is that we go all the way up to age 17 to make sure that all the kids of Batavia are taken care of. So our teens are always looking low. I think that we still have over 50 of them to put together before Sunday. Somehow, the town always comes through for us, and, you know, we'll call it a Christmas miracle, if we will, but it always works out. As usual, everybody that is a client here is going to get a small toy valued at about $30, a big toy valued at a little bit more, like 60 to 70-ish. Every kid will also get a hat, they'll get gloves, they'll get a book, a puzzle, a game. And each family will also get a piece of sporting good equipment. And we have it set up similar to like a Target pickup. We have sheets that the families have filled out for us with what the kids want, and then we go through and we shop for them. We put it in bags, and then they come through on Sunday, and we put the bags in the cars. We've had a lot of volunteers down here helping us, and things are looking good, but, you know, the last push is always for teens.
Well, again, we thank you and your family. You guys are kind of the backbone of this whole thing. I can't help but tell you, I sit here and watch you give this report, and I think about what your grandma Bailey would be saying and thinking. She'd have the biggest smile on her face that you can ever imagine, because, as you know, she was the backbone of this thing back in the days when they really had to stretch on occasion to get enough toys and whatever have you. So she really put her heart and soul into it, and I guess she just handed it off to the family, and you guys have carried on in great tradition. So your parents and yourself and your husband and everybody that surrounds you, you all deserve a great degree of thanks, because, as I said in the opening, this is the 72nd year that this toy drive has been put on through different means, but we've provided toys to needed children in Batavia since 1950. And I don't know many other towns around here that can boast that, but I think it speaks to the spirit of Batavia and the giving and the support of each other and our appreciation for children that this town holds very near and dear to their hearts. So thank you for all you are doing.
No, thank the community. It doesn't help without you guys, without the entire community of Batavia. So we can't do it without the community. We appreciate everything the community does.
Alderman Beck.
Brittany, is there a list somewhere of items you still need to fill in for these teens?
So the biggest thing for the teens, we try not to give too many gift cards because we want to make sure that the gifts go to the teens. I would say that our biggest things for girls was makeup products, and our biggest thing for boys was some sort of video game, like gift card or something, or like a Netflix-type thing, so that they could then have something to watch or to entertain themselves. And we know that those gift cards of things like that would go to the kids, but we put wallets together, we have Nerf guns for teens, all sorts of different things. But those are our biggest thing. The other, next biggest category that we're short on would be hats and gloves, which is super important that we make sure that each kid gets that as well.
Very good question, Alderman Beck. Thank you for asking.
Where can we bring them?
So, yeah, our gift cards and checks and money and anything that goes to the police station, and then both fire stations accept toys. Daddy O's Diner, Gam and Coach House, the Depot Museum, and the library are all collection sites, and most of the schools as well in town are.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Brittany? Well, great, keep up the great job. As I say, your grandmother's up there, that big smile in heaven is down upon us when she sees what you guys have done again this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you and the family.
To you as well.
All right, do we have any other matters from the public?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Happy holidays. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. We also are happy at the Chamber to be able to support the Batavia Toy Access Drive and Batavia United Way Adopt a Family. I'll introduce my guest from United Way in a minute. Before that, I just wanted to say it's been a really busy year at the Batavia Chamber. We've been really proud of some of the new initiatives that have been tried this year and been successful. We had two Grow Your Business scholarships that donated $20,000 worth of business consulting to two Batavia businesses, and it's been a smashing success. The Tea Tree and House of 423 were selected as the recipients of these grants and have been developing and working with business consultants. So we're very happy to see them working hard on their business to move to the next level. We also have supported residents in our community with many programs. We're happy to have granted four business, or four high school students scholarships this year, and we're looking forward to donating $4,000 to scholarships for the high school students again next year. The Chamber again doubled the value of Chamber bucks, giving away $5,000 out of our budget in free holiday bucks to reward the community. This is the third year the Batavia Chamber has done this, supporting residents while benefiting our local businesses. The sales have been wonderful, and the promotion is still going on. We're almost out, we cap out at $5,000 donation, so if you haven't gotten your holiday bucks yet, please make a point to come into the Chamber to pick those up. I would like to mention the Chamber is organizing the production of Batavia Community Flag. The past several years have certainly put a spotlight on our unique sense of community here in Batavia. We know our residents would like to display their civic pride, so we have a committee put together to coordinate a design contest. Marty Calhan is the committee chair of the initiative, and he will be here next month to talk about the design contest, but please go to our website to look for additional details about that. Flag Source is the flag manufacturer in town, and they will be the ones producing the winning flag design. Kathleen Tirriton, BHS's amazing graphics teacher, is also excited about the community flag. She's on the committee. She will instruct classes at the library to design a flag. She's doing a youth session that will be the evening of Monday, January 23rd, and the adult session on Wednesday, December 28th. So Marty will attend the adult one with Kathleen Tirriton, and he will co-present and show off his impressive flag collection. So encourage your neighbors, friends, and family to register with you. I want to welcome the businesses that joined the Batavia Chamber this month. Inspired Edge Coaching, Chicken Salad Chick, Little Goose Threads, Great Clips, O'Brien Property Management, and EB5 Investors Magazine. Please check out these businesses on our website. Just want to give a quick overview of a couple of our upcoming events. Wednesday, December 7th, we have networking. It's our holiday networking at Kay Hollis Jewelers, their new facility on Randall. Our featured not-for-profit that night is Casa King County. On Tuesday, December 13th, at 9:00 a.m., we will be celebrating the ribbon cutting for Chicken Salad Chick, their new restaurant on Randall Road in front of Home Depot. On Tuesday, December 13th, that's our big holiday party, holiday luncheon that the Batavia Women in Business Committee puts on each year. It's a fun festive event, always great attendance and a very spirited way to get into the Christmas holiday spirit. Registration closes this week, so if you haven't registered, I encourage you to please do that and join us. We will be supporting, as I mentioned, the Access Toy Drive and Batavia United Way Adopt a Family. We'll be collecting toys and gift cards at the event. We'll have fun raffles and a wine pool. So if you or anyone you know that can donate raffle baskets or gift cards to help benefit these charities, we would appreciate that. You could drop those off at the Batavia Chamber address at 106 West Wilson. And then finally, on December 14th, we will have our Coffee and Commerce Morning Networking at Maces Financial Group from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at the windmill, they're located in the Challenge Windmill Factory across the river. Check the Batavia Chambers website for any details on those events. Does anybody have any questions for me?
One question, the December 28th, the flag design thing, that's at the library?
That's at the library.
What time?
And I don't have the time yet, Alan. Good question. I know we will have it on our website later this week.
I'll check.
And the library will have it in their programs. Yeah, that'll be a good program. Leah?
This community flag is very exciting. Just want to make sure it's under the supervision of a vexologist.
A certified vexologist.
Well, this is, no, yes.
Yes, it's a big word. I wasn't going to use it in case I didn't get through it. That is somebody who studies flags in great depth, a master of flags. And Marty has been certified as a vexologist.
Vexologist.
So he will be the expert in the field when he's here next month talking about the flag design contest. In the presence of greatness. Now I'd like to introduce my esteemed guest, Kathleen Evangelista. She is the new executive director of Batavia United Way. She is running the Adopt a Family program this year. And come on up, Kathy. So another great way that we support those in need in our community. Kathy does a wonderful job.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Happy holidays. I hope you guys are having a good holiday season so far. My name is Kathy Evangelista. I am the executive director of Batavia United Way, and we are doing the Holiday Adopt a Family Program, which we do in collaboration with the Batavia Public Schools. We work with Batavia Public Schools, the faculty, staff, and the social workers. Through the Batavia Public Schools, identify families throughout all of the different schools who could use a bit of a holiday boost, either because of social or emotional or financial hardship. And so they put together a wish list with each family for each of the children in the families, and they send that wish list to Batavia United Way. So we then will match that wish list with sponsors in our community. And our sponsors are anywhere from, you know, a single person living here in Batavia or a family. It might be a group of neighbors who decide to, you know, band together to adopt a couple families or a larger family. We have scout troops that adopt a family, and church groups, and Mothers Club, and all kinds of different organizations. We even have, I want to say, over a dozen companies that have contacted us, local companies who are adopting families this year. So this is truly a community event. I love this event. I've been the executive director only officially a couple of weeks, but I've been a part of Batavia United Way for the past three years, and I've been involved in the Adopt a Family Program as a part of Batavia Mothers Club, all the way back to 2010. So I love this program because I see how many different parts of Batavia get involved in the Adopt a Family Program. We have the Batavia Public Schools, obviously. They're the ones who identify the families who need the assistance. This year, we have the VFW who's involved in providing a space to carry out this event next week. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is our event. BEI provides a storage space. The Lions Club of Batavia does an underwear party every November. You don't just wear your underwear there. It is where they come in and bring, anybody who attends this cocktail party brings new children's underwear or adults, because we have teenagers that we're adopting as well. So new underwear and socks. This year, we got five huge drumliner bags of new underwear and socks to distribute to all of our families. They also gave us a big check as well, because they do raffle prizes there. Batavia Youth Baseball is also a big supporter of us. They provide a lot of our Adopt bags, which are bags full of essential items like laundry detergent, toilet paper, soap, and those sorts of things. They also do a gift card drive for us. Chip in Batavia is also a supporter. They're providing grocery gift cards for our families. Batavia Women in Business, you just mentioned, and Mayor Margaret just mentioned, is providing some gift cards and financial support. Who else? Batavia Women's Club, they also are engaged in this event and providing a stocking full of goodies for each child. Batavia Bicycle Commission is providing a couple of bikes for our students who are requesting those sorts of things. Hearth and Hammer is doing a drive, a teen pajama drive. And so it really does bring so many different agencies together to really bring the holiday spirits to Batavia. Oh, one other one, Grace McWayne School just did, they did a cereal drive for us and collected over 700 boxes of cereal. On Friday, they did this event, which was really cool, where they lined up the hallway with all those cereal boxes and into the, what's it called, the multipurpose room, and did like a domino rally, and it was just adorable. We have it on our Facebook page, the video of that, if you want to check it out, Batavia United Way. So it's a really great event that brings so many different agencies together to really support Batavia, our Batavia community. And it just amazes me how very generous our community is, our residents in our community, our businesses in our community. And it kind of makes me a little teary, but I just wanted to inform you that this is going on, and we have such a great community that supports it. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, can I ask you, I've had a couple of people call and ask about your program, about how they could make a donation or whatever. So they asked if I could ask you to give your name, so they could write it down, and a phone number or an email address that they could contact you at.
They can contact us at adoptafamily@batavianitedway.org. Or they can reach us at, they can call us at our office, 630, oh gosh, 877-2780, or reach me at director@batavianitedway.org.
You want to tell them your name?
Oh, sure, Kathy Evangelista. Thought I said it at the very beginning, I'm sorry, Kathy Evangelista.
Any other questions from the group? I just want to say that, you know, I have some distant connection to this on an ongoing basis, and I've worked for many years with United Way, and we've been really blessed in town to have good executive directors. And I was, quite honestly, very tickled when I heard that Kathy had been selected as the new executive director, because I've kind of seen her in the background in this group for a few years, and she's been one of the true workhorses who really has gone out there and pitched and sold and got this thing sold to the community. So I'm very pleased that you're now running the show.
Well, thank you.
I think Batavia is going to benefit greatly from it and appreciate all the good efforts you've already done, and I can just imagine what successes you'll bring to it now that you're kind of calling the shots. So we really are, this is another one of those bright stars in the sky that we just made a little bit brighter because we got you now running the United Way. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. That's very sweet of you to say.
Anybody else have any questions, Kathy? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're back into the business agenda here, which has item nine, Resolution 22-114-R, authorizing the purchase of one 1997 Seagrave fire apparatus from the city of St. Charles for an amount not to exceed $55,000. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Alderman Rosado?
Yes, this was discussed in great length at our last Cow meeting. I believe at that time, Mayor, you had said you were going to talk to the fire marshal regarding the importance of having this vehicle for our ISO rating.
Yeah, well, who I want to talk to is next door to Alderman Lehman. She has a neighbor who is the retired executive director of the Insurance Services Office for the state of Illinois. His name's Tom Freeman. He was at one time the fire chief in both Elmhurst and in Lyle Woodridge. And he's the guy that his group went out and rates every fire department in the state as to how good they are, how good their equipment is, how's the water system, how's the manpower, and then they get a rating. And as most of you know, about four years ago, I guess it was now, Batavia got moved up to an ISO Class 1. And there's only a limited number of fire departments in the state that have an ISO Class 1. Another one that's nearest is St. Charles. We had ours before they had theirs, but we now have those two working, you know, we're working with one of them. And Tom's indicated that it would be, you know, if somebody wanted to get nasty with us, they could, if we didn't have an on-duty ladder truck within our city limits, somebody could pitch a complaint to ISO and say, well, how can they keep their ISO 1 rating when they don't have a ladder truck? And he says, that's happened before, and ISO will come out here, and there's a lot of questions to answer and whatever. So he certainly recommended that we use it. And, you know, I had lunch with the fire chief of St. Charles on Friday, because he's the one that kind of helped, co-runs the tri-city ambulance group. And so we had a meeting, we've just had to hire a new executive director for that. And so he and I had a chance to talk about this, and I wasn't sure which, St. Charles has had three Seagrave ladder trucks, and I wasn't sure which one we were buying, but we're buying the middle one that they have. So this is not the oldest one that they had, but the middle one. And this one, I went up and looked at it. It seems to be in very good condition, and I would suggest that, you know, it's certainly going to be Chief Hanson's call, but once we get ours back, our good truck, our current truck back from its being repaired, we can keep this, and we can have one on each side, we can have a ladder truck on each side of town, which should certainly help strengthen our ISO Class 1. And we've always got the backup, and so I would just strongly recommend that we do this for the price that we're getting. And St. Charles indicated to me, you know, they're kind of giving us a real good deal on it with the idea that they'll get to use it back if something happens real quick. And so we're just kind of sharing each other's good things here. So I would encourage this. Any other comments?
If not, I'd like, go ahead, I'm sorry. Alderman, you are?
Yeah, again, my opposition to this was not about the short-term need for the truck while we have ours out for repair. It's about the long-term maintenance costs. I still don't know what the maintenance costs are, nor the insurance costs, et cetera, et cetera. That's where I'm coming from, is that we start, if it's, let's say it's $40,000 a year, over five years, it's $200,000 that we don't have to put towards a new truck. So that's my opposition to this. This is basically an unfunded item.
I think there'll be savings on wear and tear on the truck when it comes back in service as well, so I think we'll gain a little bit there. Alderman Beck?
I'll support this because I support the short-term need of having one while the other one is in the shop. However, once we have the other one back in our fleet, given the demands that we currently have for a ladder truck, and, you know, until our city development demands, you know, more use of a ladder truck, I wouldn't support keeping two in the fleet long-term. And so while purchasing it, as soon as our other truck is back, then I'll make regular requests, maybe every year at budget time, to say, okay, is it time to surplus that second truck? Because I don't want that to become the norm that we have. Because I don't want that to become the norm that we have these two trucks when I don't think that our call volume or our call needs are demanding it.
That was one thing that I was going to ask for was when we get to the point of the other truck is fixed, our, our, our regular, the newer truck is fixed, that we get some kind of estimate from the fire department on what they think the reduction in maintenance costs will be on the new truck. If we were to use the other one, say 50% of the calls that we send it out on for ladder calls, if we were to use the other truck, what would the maintenance, would it be a wash just, you know, instead of $40,000 on one truck, we spend 20 on each if we use them 50% of the time? Or would we be, you know, if we cut down 50% of the use here, would we only spend $20,000 or $10,000 on the other truck if we were using that the other portion of the time? So to try to make a decision whether or not we keep that long-term, you know, and long-term I say is five years with that, to see how things go. I mean, I just start thinking about how many three-story buildings we've had built in the last five years is a lot more than what we ever had in town. So, and I don't see that that may change. I think that that may grow in number for the amount of multi-story buildings we have. So I kind of lean towards us keeping it if the numbers look okay.
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else?
I'm kind of with Mark on this. I would have, really have liked to have seen more numbers on this, more long-term numbers, yearly, what's the insurance, what's the insurance to have two ladder trucks? What is the maintenance projections on this? Do we even know what condition it's coming in, what we'll have to do right off the bat, what is expected over the next year, over the next two years? Those were, that would have been nice, those would, numbers would have been nice to have had, have made this decision. And I know we did get our ISO rating with only one ladder truck originally. So, and I know our ladder truck will need some maintenance, but at the end of the day, we still had our ISO rating with just the one ladder truck.
What I was referring to was not having any at all. If we don't get this one and the other one goes away for extended maintenance, we won't have, we won't have one here. And that's when Tom Freeman, when I talked to him at Red Hive last Friday, said, well, that's when somebody is mad at you, will go in and pitch a complaint to ISO that you got a one, but you don't have a ladder truck in town. So that's what he was referring to.
Right. And there's always those what-ifs in those, those situations, which are complicated for And then I also, I'm, I'm curious, my understanding was that this was the oldest one in the fleet of the ladder trucks of St. Charles. Am I misunderstanding?
They had three of them. They've gotten, they're now down to, they just bought a new one. So they've got the one, what would have been the second one, they, they're maintaining it, but not this one they can then get rid of. And there was one before this one that they got rid of. So there's, there's three in the station now and they're going to get rid of this one to us. And so then they'll only have two. And the other one's long gone that they bought that, the chief told me, he thought they had bought that second hand from maybe Berwin or something way back in the 1990s or something like, it was used then. So they've, they're long gone with that one. So.
I was just kind of curious. I thought we do more calls in St. Charles. Do we? Okay. All right.
We're pretty close, but we're, they probably have more than.
Five, five hundred.
Okay. All right. All right. Anyone else? If nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 22-114-R, authorizing the purchase of one 1997 Seagrave fire apparatus from the city of St. Charles, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed 55,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman Rosado, second by Malley. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Eleven yes, two no, one absent.
Eleven yes, two no, one absent. The motion for a purchase of the truck is approved. Okay, moving to item 10, which is Resolution 22-111-R, City of Batavia, 2023 Annual Budget. Who gets to present this?
Your Honor, I'll certainly present, but I would like to turn it over to staff for the initial part, which is the presentation, just make some general remarks. And I'd like to take the budget and the levies all together for a set of votes, just to handle it. So I guess I'll turn it over to staff first for our presentation.
So Peggy Coby is going to do this, I assume?
Hello, good evening. I don't have a presentation on the budget. I do for the tax levy, which follows this, but the budget, which was discussed at the November 15th meeting, has not changed at all. The total expenditures are $148,478,112. What did change is we added $200,000 to the revenue amount for a total of $135,708,702.
And for the public's general information, that it was keeping the tax rate level.
Yes.
Correct. And that's where that comes from. And we had planned on using that for infrastructure.
Yes.
So that's why, I just want to make sure that the public understands that. That's where that extra money is going.
And the tax rate, Peggy, is going to stay about 73 cents per hundred on the tax?
Yes. I do have some slides that we can go over after the budget is passed.
I just, I don't need to cause anybody else any trouble, but if you throw our, our tax rate on that screen and then compare us to our neighbors, Peggy Coby's going to look really good.
No, the city council will.
Well, I mean, there's a couple of neighbors of us that have rates that blow us right out of the water as far as how high they are, so.
That's right. And Batavia continues to remain on the low end, except for Geneva, who is a non-home rule community. So they are bound by how much they can levy. So their rate is lower than ours, but all of the other surrounding communities, our rate is lower. Some of them don't have a fire department, so we have to add in the fire district's rate to those cities to make it comparable to Batavia, but ours is lower than all of the surrounding communities.
Yeah, as you know, I serve as chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning Council of Mayors for CMAP. And so I get to go to meetings with a lot of other mayors. And this is a frequent question I get is, what's the magic Batavia's doing out there with, that you were able to put that rate on your property tax bills for people? Because there's some places, specifically in the south suburbs, where the property tax is the only real revenue they got coming in. And their property tax rates are just unbelievable, as far as I can tell. I mean, if you had those in Batavia, we'd have this room full of protesters. I mean, it would be, wow. And I mean, these aren't very big towns, but they don't have any other revenues, other than to tax the property. And that's one of the advantages we have with the city administration. And I give Peggy a lot of credit and certainly her a lot of credit. We've encouraged a lot of things in here that generate some money for us. And, you know, the waste transfer station out in the industrial park, that was a little bit controversial, but there's a lot of money comes out of that waste transfer station.
Yes.
And, you know, some other stuff we're doing, we, we get a lot of money. And, you know, the number of cell tower transmitters we got sitting on top of our water towers and whatever, that's another great source of revenue. And we're just very fortunate that we've got the spread and where they're at and around town and in different locations. And so there's a lot of other people who need a radio antenna that Batavia provides a great spot for them. So we've, we've been able to do some really good stuff with it. And I know Peggy's always got her eyes and ears open. And when we get some sales tax revenue now from the internet, do we not, from the home deliveries?
Yes, we're getting considerable sales tax.
Do you know approximately what that number is this year?
I can't narrow it down specifically.
Right.
Because it's not reported to us that way, but based on the increase overall in our sales tax, it's been over 500,000 in an increase over prior years. So we have to assume that a large portion of that is related to the online sales because our stores haven't changed, you know, the makeup of our stores haven't changed dramatically.
You just said what I wanted you to say because, I mean, that, that used to be, there was, as you may remember, there initially was some federal prohibitions on sales tax on the internet. But then a few years ago, some other places really started to feel the pain of it. And so gradually, suddenly they changed it all and, and we started getting it. And that was a real possible, positive moment for us and a number of others to get that revenue in. Because quite honestly, that stuff that's arriving on and from the truck and putting on your doorstep, that's kind of in competition with your local merchant, who you'd have to go to their store and buy and pay the sales tax if you didn't do it here. But now you have to pay the sales tax.
Yes.
We're, we've kind of caught up on that, so.
And it's good because those trucks are driving on our streets that we have to maintain.
Right. So this has become a political education meeting here tonight, but that's, so does anybody have any other questions of Peggy on the budget? Alderman Janzett?
I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned hats off to Peggy and her staff. The budget process over my tenure has gotten substantially better every year that passes. The new software that we made investments in for the department has far surpassed what I ever could have expected. The reporting and the ease of access through ClearGov. Anybody that's listening or tuning in tonight can look at detailed documents about the budget, review each line item, see where the money is going, how it's being spent, allocations for capital projects and whatnot. What I liked best about the process, it is, it is truly transparent. So definitely, definitely appreciate that. The discussions that we had were absolutely fantastic, too. We were able to renew commitments for capital projects. I know there are residents in Carriage Crest that are waiting for improvements to the neighborhood for, for floods and whatnot. And we're making major investments in the city and in the staff. So if there is no further discussion, I would move that we approve the annual budget for 2023.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 22-111-R, City Batavia, 2023 Annual Budget. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much. Moving to 10, or let's see, 11, Presentation of the 2022 Tax Levy. Peggy, do you have this?
Yes, I do. I stole this from your presentation that you, from the mayor's breakfast, because it was such a nice picture, looking down on the city. So the total EAV for the city of Batavia municipal borders is expected to be 1.2 billion for the property valued at January 1 of 2022. The tax, taxes lag behind. So any construction in this year will not be reflected until next year. Our levy amount is 8.7 million and the rate is expected to be 0.738, which is what we had for this year. So no increase to the rate. And this is just a breakdown by the types of funds that we levy for. It includes police pension, fire pension, and IMRF is for all those that are not, non-police and fire for pensions. And then there's just a chart here that shows how much an individual would pay if you live in a $300,000 home. You would pay approximately $694 for city services in 2023. It's called 2022 because it's based on the EAV that's provided in 2022. It will be collected in 2023. And that's all I had on that. I don't know if there are any questions.
Any questions? Do we have somebody who would care to make a motion then for the approval of the 2022 Tax Levy?
So moved.
Second. Moved by, was it Alderman Janzett? And second by Wolf?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
All right. Motion's approved. And moving to 12, which is Ordinance 22-56, the 2022 Tax Levy. Somebody care to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Sulfah. Peggy, do you have anything you want to say?
Wasn't that the one?
That's what we just voted on. I didn't realize that we didn't state that it was. Presentation we turned into the tax levy.
I turned that in.
We're like 13 now.
Okay, let's then go to 13, which is 2257, Special Service Area Number 30 Tax Levy. Who's got this one?
I'll just go ahead and cover that. That is for Prairie Trail South for the detention bond in that area that the city maintains.
Any questions on that one? Did entertain a motion then for that?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Sulfah for the Ordinance 2257, the Tax Levy for the, again, what?
Prairie Trail South.
Prairie Trail South.
Detention area.
Detention area. Any further comments on that? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion of Ordinance 2257 is approved. And moving to 14, which is Ordinance 2258, SSA 62 for Tax Levy. Peggy, which one's that?
And this is for the Batavia Main Street funding. The city contributes 40,000 to Batavia Main Street and the downtown property owners also contribute 40,000 in that. The levy amount is less because the way the county does the levy, it creates TIP increment. So we, by levying the 28,000, we'll get the additional amount in the TIF that will pay over to Main Street.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Do we have a motion then for the approval of Ordinance 2258?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Lehman for the approval of Ordinance 2258. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 15, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. I have just a couple of things that I wanted to provide you with updates about. I prepared a letter to send to each one of the retailers who are affected by the single-use bag fee, explaining the requirements and also letting them know that there's going to be a public awareness campaign that will begin shortly after the beginning of next year, and I want to request a meeting to sit down and meet with them individually to talk about how the reporting process will work and the collection of the fee, and hope to get their cooperation so that we can start collecting data right away, knowing what the baseline is of the number of bags that they have been giving out in the past, and then to be able to collect the information on the effectiveness of the public awareness campaign. Once the fee starts being paid, then we'll get an indication from them of how many bags that they're using at that time. IT is also working to set up a system within our permitting software that will allow us to collect that data and also collect the fees from those who are affected by that. And then we also, with the approval of the accounts payable at this meeting, will be the initial payment to the marketing firm for them to get started on creating that campaign. Also, on Thursday of last week, the Batavia Police Department announced that in collaboration with Project ChildSafe, that they have obtained gun locks to be provided for free to the public. Each kit contains both a gun lock and then also curriculum for the family regarding gun safety. They've also partnered with Moms Demand Action in the past with getting their group these same locking devices, so that when they are at events, they can have the gun locks and the curriculum at their table to be able to hand out at those events. We know that this initiative is something that has a direct and immediate impact on Batavia residents and surrounding communities, and with every kitten brochure that we're giving away. So if someone is interested in obtaining one of those kits, they simply need to come to the Batavia Police Department and ask at the front desk, and we thank the Batavia Police Department for putting that program together. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me?
Any questions in order tonight?
Thank you.
Committee reports, Government Services, Alderman Chanset, do you have anything?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Community Development, Alderman Wolf?
No report this evening.
Public Utilities, Alderman Serone?
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, City Services, Alderman Rosado?
Yes, no report this evening, Your Honor.
Wow, that was quick. We have other business from the city council, anybody wants to bring up? Okay.
I have one other.
Go ahead.
Back in the summer, when we were celebrating Pride Month, we had an unfortunate incident where we had a vandalism. There were some residents that were very upset that their flags were taken down, and there was some damage done to their homes. The Batavia Police Department treated the incident with much seriousness, investigating it as a possible hate crime. At the time, I was expecting it was possible that maybe someone would come forward, or possibly we would have an arrest made. A couple weeks went by and we didn't, and I put out there a GoFundMe. A handful of people were very generous and raised almost $500 very quickly, and I put in my GoFundMe that I would put a sunset on it if we did not have an arrest by 5:00 December 18th. I put it off, hoping that we would find someone, and unfortunately, we have not. So in the time between then and now, if you're listening and you took people's pride flags, and you have a guilty conscience, there's $465 in my checkbook. I'd like to write to you to cover your attorney fees so you can plead guilty for your crime. Otherwise, if we don't have an arrest, I pledged to the GoFundMe to make the donation to Youth Outlook, the organization that provides crisis counseling services for LGBT kids in our immediate area. So I just would hope that someone listening would bring an end to the episode for the Batavia residents who had their security shaken by the intrusion on their front porches, and recognize that the rest of their neighbors love them and are happy that they are living here in Batavia, and I will present the check to Youth Outlook at a future council meeting if we don't have an arrest. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Okay, very briefly, under the mayor's report, I just want to publicly thank and commend the Batavia School District and the Batavia Park District for their very cooperative spirit that was shown over the Bulldog Football Team's ascension into the state football championship, and as all of you know, they did get to the championship game, but however, they got defeated. But I would tell you that I have received a lot of positive comment from other mayors and other towns and about the sportsmanship and the quality of play that was shown by Batavia, and certainly, we were really blessed with, over the season, with the announcing abilities of Mr. Wolf and Mr. Lundberg. They have become almost professional announcers, in my opinion, because they have their own fan club. I would just share this with you, in Batavia, we have a number of senior living communities in town, and I think almost every one of them has a Batavia Sports Fan Club now, and they go down on Friday or Saturday night and watch the game together, and you got to know all the players, and it's meant a lot to them, and when a couple games didn't get broadcast, there was a lot of upset people that they didn't hear it. I stress to the school district, you need to do, from a pure political perspective, you need to get those games on TV so that the people in their senior citizen communities can watch them. So that being said, I think the return home that we did last Sunday afternoon was extremely well-received, and I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Batavia Main Street and all those involved, and certainly the Batavia Community Band, which had scheduled to do a little Christmas concert at the beginning of it, they kind of altered their program a little bit, and they were on Pegbon Stage when the football team got here and played some Batavia High School music for a few minutes. And so did the community band, we take our hat off, but the best guess was, we had probably well over 500 people down here for the football team. I think we had all the parents and grandparents and a lot of the fans, but it was a good, and we ran that about 4:30 or so. We brought them up, the fire department and police were very cooperative, and we shut the street down, and we put the team in between two fire trucks on a low buoy and brought them up, and then we got up on the stage, and I said some nice things, I guess, about them, and I had people tell me they liked what I said, but then the highlight was, Coach Perron got up and they gave a real nice talk about him, and then he invited, I think it was at the end, nine different players from the team, who were kind of key people in the movement, to come up, and some of them only said two or three words, but they all seemed to get a big kick out of doing it. And so I think there were some lifetime memories made here that day for those kids, and they really showed what a special team they were and what a special town Batavia is to that team. So we're going to bring the team down here after the first of the year. Coach tells me, well, he may have to do it over several sessions, because he's got quite a few, and I've already informed Alderman Wolf that we're going to give each one of them a little proclamation that we're going to pass, and that he's going to get to read the names of all the players, because he's already done it many times, because, man, I read the names of those last, last names of those kids, I'd butcher it up pretty bad. So I got my right-hand expert.
I got one wrong for part of the year, but we got that straight out.
Well, anyway, they're coming, so you, just so you know, we'll do that after the first of the year. The other thing I want to share with you is, on November 29th, I had a visitor in time by the name of Mike Reed, and Mike Reed is the newly-elected mayor of Hampshire, Illinois, and he called and asked if he could come down to Batavia and kind of study things, because he thought we were maybe one of the best examples out there of a town that really had dealt with growth. And so he gets down here, and he proceeds to tell me that Hampshire, now, I don't know if most of you know, it's up there in the northwest corner of Kane County, that they, as a city, prior to him taking office, have annexed a whole bunch of empty farmland next to their town, which will translate into 2,800 new single-family residences. And he says, so he wanted to look at our sewer plant, for one thing he wanted to do, and says he's, he knows he's got some major challenges. Hampshire's just built a beautiful new high school out there, which is a three-story building, I guess they don't use it all yet, but they've got some consolidation with a couple other school districts in there, and they've, so they're doing some stuff. So in Chicago, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, I've been asked in there several times about what is happening in northwest Kane County, because not only is Hampshire doing this, but I guess Huntley and Burlington and Pingry Grove and Plato Center and Gilbert's, they're all in this annexation and building stuff. Now, the houses haven't appeared, but I guess the zoning and that's there for it to happen. And of course, a major catalyst out there was when this tollway opened up Route 47 with a full interchange, and that's almost halfway between the Fox Valley and Rockford, and so you can commute either way and do a bunch of other different stuff. So there's a lot of things going on out there, so everybody's watching, but I just thought it was interesting that one of the officials from that area wanted to come to Batavia and study what we had done here, because he had heard good things about how we had managed and handled growth. And so before he came, I sat down with our development department, and we figured out that as near as we could tell, in the last couple of years, we have issued or are about to issue building permits for 537 new residences. Now, some of these are townhouses, some of these are condos, and some of these are apartments, and some of these are like 144 units out at the landings there, right there by the Walmart. But if you add them all up, we got well over 500 new living units have been approved. The day we were figuring it, Jeff Albertson told me that he had just issued the permits for the last three houses, the attached condos out at Batavia Commons, out at Wind Energy and Kirk Road, so every unit that was, there's 242 out there in total, and we had just issued the permits for the last six. So we've got some pretty significant growth at a time when everything else has kind of calmed down around us. The one that I'm suggesting we watch with interest is the Winding Creek Development, which is on McKee Street, kind of behind Coles out there, and they've got a permission from us, which you all voted for, they can build 163 single-family units on that property, and they can either be single-story or two-story, and then I guess they allow you to do some, you know, your own wishes inside the design of the building. But, so I'm told what they're experiencing out there is grandparents of people who already live in Batavia want to get here and be near their grandchildren, so they're looking at the one-stories, and the families are looking at the two-stories, and so it's kind of an interesting concept of the, kind of the two different design styles kind of competing against each other in that subdivision. So it'll be interesting to see what eventually pops up out there, but they can do either or, and they've already built two models of the two-story, which is, I think, the bigger one that they hope to sell, but I've had two or three people call or ask questions about it from the city's perspective, and all those were, one guy was living in Youngstown, Ohio, and his family now lives in Batavia, and he thought he and his wife wanted to come over here, but they need a one-story unit because of their age and whatever have you, so. And then I had another couple call from Chicago, and they have some family out here, and they were looking for a one-story unit. So I think those one-story units will be very popular out there, but, well, we're going to add another 500-plus to Batavia here in the next year when all this stuff is built, and, you know, I've already been kind of urging you on that we need to get ready to do a special census here at some point in time to get a new count on us, because that could mean if we get 500 more units here, that plus what I think was the undercount in the 2020 census, we'll have a nice population increase here for the second half of the next, this decade. That will be pretty significant, and will make, hopefully, Peggy Koby's job a little bit simpler, because she'll have some more money running in at her. But we, we got the positive spin going on here, and I just wanted to express that to you and your thanks for all the support the council's given to all this, because it's not been without some consternation and debate and ideas of what we should and should not do, and I think, you know, if nothing else, too, it certainly is helping the spin we're getting of all these new merchants wanting to come into downtown Batavia and in Randall Road, because suddenly, there's this promise, there's going to be more of us here as the days move forward. So that's my speech for tonight. Alderman Wolf, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move, we adjourn.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned.